Right, I want to introduce data analyst Carolyn Lou. Who will now give a short presentation on why we're proposing faster response times for FHB wheelchair accessible vehicles. Carolyn.
Thank you, Commissioner Doe. Let me share my screen. Okay. Hi, everyone. My name is Carolyn Lou and I'm a data analyst in the Policy Division's Data Analytics Unit. Today I'll be walking everyone through these slides on the current FHB wave landscape and a bit on the analysis we performed to inform the proposed rules regarding the central dispatcher wait times. So first executive summary, the current rules of eighty percent of FHB wave wait times and under ten minutes and ninety percent under fifteen minutes are already being met. In 2023, ninety percent of wave rides came within ten minutes for Lyft and eighty-eight percent for Uber. And so far in 2024, that's up to October of 2024, the companies have either provided a similar level of service as they did the previous year or slightly better in Lyft's case. There's been a positive trend in the percentage of waves arriving in under ten minutes. We started at around sixty percent in 2019 to and have risen to almost ninety percent this year. So this brings us to our proposed threshold of ninety percent of wave trip services completed in under ten minutes. This will encourage companies to improve accessibility, prevent backsliding, and exceed typical bus headways. So a bit on the FHB wave landscape. The FHB wave fleet has grown tremendously over the last five or six years. In January of 2019, there were only three hundred thirty-nine vehicles in service. And as of October 2024, there are over seven thousand six hundred. And so far in 2024, over eight thousand five hundred drivers performed high-volume FHB trips. This chart here shows the yearly wave trip share for FHVs. And we can see for every year since 2020, there's been year-over-year growth. And so far, 2024 has seen the highest share of FHB trips completed in a wave at just over nine percent. So the rest of the slides show annual trends for different wait time thresholds. Here we're looking at the percentage of wave wait times for the fifteen-minute threshold. And we can see that Uber has exceeded the ninety percent under fifteen-minute threshold for every year since 2020. Lyft caught up in 2022. And so far for this year, over ninety-seven percent of wave trip services have been fulfilled in under fifteen minutes. This slide just shows a similar, similar as the previous slide, just for the ten-minute threshold. Both companies have been able to meet and exceed the current eighty percent and under ten-minute requirements since 2022. And Lyft over the last two years has actually been able to exceed the ninety percent threshold while Uber is hovering just a little bit below at the high eighties. So this final chart shows the industry wait times for different thresholds. Ten minutes in dark purple, light purple is the fifteen-minute one. As an industry, for every year since 2020, over just about ninety percent, or at least over ninety percent, have been serviced in under fifteen minutes. And for the ten-minute threshold, back in 2019, just over sixty percent of wave trips were fulfilled in under ten minutes. And over the last two years, the industry has kind of been rapidly approaching that ninety percent threshold. And that concludes our presentation. Thank you. Happy to take any questions.
Commissioners, are there any questions?
I have a quick question, which is, have you seen the total number of wave trip requests increase as well? Or simply the, the share of total trips has remained stable while the percentage has increased?
I would need to look back at the data and I don't have the numbers for that on hand right now.
Okay, thank you.
Are there any other questions from commissioners? Okay. Oh, great. Okay, hearing none, I will ask Cheryl to now go through our public hearing.
Good morning. When I call your name, you can unmute your microphone and begin your testimony. Each speaker will be allotted three minutes. This time limit will be strictly enforced. A thirty-second warning will be provided, and then you will need to conclude your testimony when your time is up. Today's rule proposals were published in the City Record and posted on our website on October 31st. The public comment period ends today. The video of this hearing and copies of all written comments will be provided to the commissioners prior to the vote on these roles at the next, before the next commission meeting. With that, we'll begin our public hearing. First, we're going to do the FHB ways proposal, and I'll call on our first speaker, and that is Joseph Rappaport. Mr. Rappaport, you can begin.
You need to unmute.
Yes, yes, yeah, no, I'm trying to do that. Ah, okay. Hold on. Thank you for the opportunity to testify. I'm Joe Rappaport, the Executive Director of the Brooklyn Center for Independence of the Disabled, or BCID. We're a core member of the Taxis for All campaign, which has advocated for wheelchair-accessible yellow and for higher service since 1996. We support the TLC's proposal to reduce the wait time for four higher providers. As my colleagues Evan Yankee and Kathy Collins and perhaps others will testify today. And we urge that you codify more stringent requirements over time so that service is truly equivalent. We appreciate the progress you and the providers have made so far, however. We also want to use this opportunity to urge you to further change your yellow taxi accessibility rules so that the fleet becomes a hundred percent accessible, not fifty percent. The compromise taxis for all campaign made eleven years ago, almost to the day. We urge you to work with us and with drivers to, and particularly with drivers to develop a funding mechanism for a smooth transition to a hundred percent over the next few years. That way, no one will be left behind if they're looking for a yellow taxi. And finally, we urge you also to hold off on abandoning the current accessible dispatch system. Some of you may remember the late Edith Prentice, who headed the Taxis for All campaign for several years. Edith pushed and pushed, as only Edith could, for accessible dispatch because she knew that without a hundred percent accessibility in the yellow taxi fleet and far from complete Uber and Lyft accessibility, wheelchair users would always, would always have difficulty getting a ride. Drivers would pass them up illegally and in some neighborhoods in the city, including Washington Heights, where Edith lived, it'd be hard to get an accessible taxi. Edith was right. Now, when Uber and Lyft don't show up, when accessory ride gets lost or when someone just wants to use a yellow cab to get home on a rainy day, accessible dispatch works for them. One huge advantage of accessible dispatch is that it's easy to use. We urge you to keep it in place until any replacement is as easy and effective for all disabled riders. Thank you for the opportunity to testify, and we look forward to hearing more and for your passage of these rules. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker up is Jean Ryan.
Hello.
Hello.
I'm Jean Ryan. Can, can you hear me and see me?
Yes.
Thank you. I'm Jean Ryan, a wheelchair user, president of Disabled in Action of Metropolitan New York, as well as a longtime member of Taxis for All campaign. And I agree with what Mr. Rappaport said about accessible dispatch. It's extremely important to people, and we need to have a way to contact people if the ride doesn't show up. It can't just be an app. Being able to call for or use an app to get spontaneous transportation in a four-hire vehicle is life-changing and something that no wheelchair user takes for granted after many years of working toward it. However, it's not very spontaneous if we have to almost always wait longer for a wave than upright people do. It's highly frustrating. Changing the rules to require that ninety percent of wave trips have to come in ten minutes or less is an improvement, but we want parity. What about the other ten percent? What about when a wave is totally not available by app or phone? How are those stats recorded? People in Eastern Queens and Eastern Brooklyn in particular cannot get an Uber or Lyft in a timely manner. After an hour of trying, I never could get an Uber from Staten Island back to Brooklyn. I was stranded. The Lyft app told me no vehicles were available on Forty-Second Street. How are those trips or non-trips recorded when we try to get a ride and can't get one at all? We need consistency. It's not good if we don't know when, if we can get a ride and if we can get back to. The timeframe should be tightened up even more so that every time we want a ride, we can get one wherever we are. Also, it's good that the actual arrival time will be recorded now because what the app says and what actually happens are seldom the same. Sometimes I have to wait three times longer than what the app said it, it would take for the vehicle to come. I also object to Uber's app making wheelchair users cross the street to get to the vehicle much of the time. That is not safe. Nor is the inability of most drivers to secure us safely, our wheelchairs.
Thirty seconds remaining.
Or, and with secuements and a seatbelt. It's almost impossible to get a driver to put our seatbelt on for us. They don't know. They said they left it at home or it's in the garage. Thank you. Bye.
Okay. Our next speaker is Anna Humphrey.
Thank you for the opportunity to speak today. My name is Anna Humphrey and I'm the Transportation Community Organizer for the Center for Independence of the Disabled in New York. I'm here to voice our strong support for the proposed amendments to the TLC's wheelchair-accessible vehicle wait time requirements. Access to reliable on-demand transportation is a right that should be equally available to all New Yorkers, regardless of physical ability. Since the implementation of wait time benchmarks in 2019, we've seen significant improvement with wait times for waves drastically reduced. Yet, as noted, wave users still experience longer wait times than those who use non-accessible four-hire vehicles. Distance discrepancy is unacceptable and stands in the way of equal access. The proposed update, which would require wave dispatchers to meet a stricter standard of serving ninety percent of wave requests in under ten minutes, is a necessary step to close this service gap, although the goal should always be one hundred percent. The increased availability of nearly six thousand waves in recent years is proof that with the right regulatory framework, accessible vehicle service can be significantly enhanced. The stricter response times will incentivize dispatchers to continue prioritizing wheelchair-accessible trips, ultimately leveling the playing field for riders with disabilities. We all deserve the right. We all deserve the dignity of reliable, timely service. And these proposed challenges are essential to making that a reality for the disability community. I urge the TLC to adopt this rule to ensure that all riders, regardless of ability, have equal access to transportation services in New York City. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker up is Jose Altamorano.
Hear me?
Yes.
Perfect. Good morning, commissioners. My name is Jose Altamorano, and I'm here as President of the Livery Based Owners Association, which represents over two hundred and fifty livery bases. These bases are predominantly small, family-owned businesses that play a critical role in connecting underserved communities, especially immigrants and first-generation Americans, to essential services and opportunities. We are part of the Uber Wave program. I'm here today to express our concern about the proposed changes to increase the wave trip dispatch compliance threshold from eighty to ninety percent. While we support the efforts to improve customer experience, this rule as currently drafted risks imposing disproportionate and unsustainable costs on small livery bases. The current eighty percent compliance requirement already demands significant investment in dispatch technology, travel recruitment, and service coordination. For smaller bases, many of which operate with limited resources, meeting this threshold is a continuous challenge. Increasing the threshold to ninety would amplify these challenges exponentially. Changes not account for factors beyond the base or wave's providers' control, such as traffic congestion, unpredictable driver availability, and the need to accommodate last-minute passenger requests. In neighborhoods where transit options are limited and demand fluctuates, penalizing bases falling short of an even stricter threshold would jeopardize their financial stability and reduce their ability to serve these communities. As the Commission knows, this wave program receives no subsidy grants or funding of any kind from the City of New York or the State of New York. We urge the Commission to consider the broader implications of this rule. By raising the compliance threshold, you risk exacerbating the economic strain on small businesses we use the wave provider, reducing service availability for vulnerable populations, and ultimately undermining the diversity and accessibility of our city's transportation ecosystem. The city's pedestrian-focused city planning also affects this timing. A few months ago, the FDNY testified in front of city council that their emergency vehicles were not able to reach emergencies on a timely basis due to the city's implementations of bike lanes and bus lanes, causing the streets to get smaller, more congested, and harder to navigate. Therefore, we recommend maintaining the eighty percent threshold, which strikes a reasonable balance between service improvements and the operational realities of livery bases. This approach will ensure that bases use wave program can continue providing safe, reliable, and affordable transportation while avoiding unintended harm to the communities they serve. Or at the very least, to raise from the current eighty percent threshold to eighty-five percent, allowing the economic strain to be more sustainable and organic. Thank you for the opportunity to testify today. I'm happy to answer any questions the Commission may have.
Thank you.
Lou. Can I, can we ask a question?
Sure.
Hello, sir. Appreciate your testimony here. I presume that you saw the data that was recently put up online relative to the current rate of response time, which is, which is in some places exceeds the ninety percent, and in other places is very, very close to the ninety percent. So in essence, what we're really doing is codifying what currently exists. Is that not true?
It is true, Commissioner. However, you're putting a rule in effect. It's almost like penalizing the program for being successful. So if the program is being successful, it's already doing better than what you expected. And now you're raising it to a point, you know, where now this is a new expectation that will have to definitely meet by any standard, which means that now there is a financial obligation to meet or go over because that's how businesses work, right? We don't want to reach a position where we go under the percentages that are required. So now we have to kind of over, you know, go a little over. And that obviously costs money, costs training drivers, costs more vehicles. You know, I think that this program has been doing an amazing job over the years. And we're asking for something to be a little more moderate, you know, if, if we're doing such a good job.
So you're aware that we're dealing here with a population for, for a variety of reasons. Life is not simplified for them, right? So we're dealing with a population here that has enough playing difficulty in getting around. And the goal here is only to try to make it even easier for a population for to have this, this, this problem for many, many, many years. So for us, all, all, all of us here in the community in a variety of ways, both in the government side and on the public side, to try to raise the standard for people who are, who are starting with, 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 with some difficulty, I think, isn't, isn't that what, what the community service, isn't that what government is all about? To try to make it easier for those who need to help the most?
I agree a hundred percent, Commissioner. I actually was, I knew Edith very well, and I was very saddened to hear that she passed away. We worked with her for many years. This is definitely true, what you're saying. But like you said, government, what you're doing, as in the Commission, is putting this completely on private hands because the government is not giving us any funding, any subsidies, any economic help in this situation. So we're doing this privately, right? This is all being funded privately. So anyone that's part of this wave is participating and obviously paying into it. So, I mean, that's part of what the issue is, right? The government is trying to do this, but it's doing it through private matters. We are trying to do it in a way of, as we run our businesses, in a way that makes sense. And yes, we definitely want to continue to improve, to get better. But that's why we said, you know, if we go from eighty to eighty-five, and then we continue to improve as we go along. But again, we're doing this privately, not through any help of the government, which is why our concern is an economic strain.
We are the, with, through the licensing process, the Commission licenses vehicles and allows the industry to make money by picking up people on the street. So it's not like it's independent. They all certainly connect. Okay?
Thank you so much, Commissioner Bader. Thank you, Jose. I appreciate your time.
All right. Our next speaker up is Michael Simon.
Hello, Commissioner. And thank you for the opportunity to share my thoughts on the subject and my thoughts in general. Alderman of many years ago said, when they decided to sell medallions, there's too many cars, too many cabs. Let's do something about it. So they said, okay, from now on, if you want to be a taxi, you have to have a medallion. If you don't have a medallion, you can't pick up people in the City of New York who are hailing a car on the street. That's what medallion owners bought then and now. Because of the new e-hail, you unleashed incredible numbers and contributed in large part to congestion, the very thing that the medallion was meant to prevent. There's no indication in the law as to how to do a street hail.
Sir?
Because how to do it didn't matter.
Sir, do you have comments on the rule proposal, which involves FHVs, not taxis?
Okay, well, my testimony is relevant because the apps are using our street hail rights as well, as well in wave vehicles. That's why it is relevant. Everything about this, this meeting is relevant to taxis because it really affects the taxis, how you implement the wave requirements for the app cars. But I'll get, I'll get to this, to that subject right now more precisely. Why should app cars be allowed to discriminate? Open up the apps, Uber. Wait time between Uber X and Uber Wave, you can see that it takes longer for the disabled to get an Uber, to get an Uber Wave. That seems like discrimination to me. Apps should have equal waiting times for their disabled passengers and non-disabled passengers. That's what you're doing to yellows. Equitable treatment should be for all competitors. Otherwise, it's disadvantageous to yellows and will continue their downward spiral, not because of the requirement to be waves, but because it's not being applied equally. Okay, I have a lot to say about the e-hail being a street hail. And only cars that have medallion, only cabs can do e-hails because an e-hail is a street hail. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Iman Romawi Doster.
Yes, thank you. Thank you so much. Good morning. Good morning. My name is Iman Romawi Doster, and I'm a senior community organizer with New York Lawyers for the Public Interest and the Disability Justice Department. We are in support of this improvement in the rules. We would like to use this as a platform to highlight the need for zero-admission waves and for the role of the TLC that y'all could play in creating the market for those. Accessibility and environmental sustainability are paramount in the future of our city. We recently met with the TLC and they asked us to come to this wonderful City Hall hearing about TLC improvements in accessibility, but we also have concerns about them wanting to cut the call centers. We also want to improve driver training. Issues persist with drivers not properly securing wheelchairs. I sometimes fluctuate between using a wheelchair and a walker because of the nature of my lupus and being a double amputee. Our trainings produced for these folks are people with disabilities actually involved in these trainings. Sometimes seatbelt buckles are tucked under deep in the seat, which can be difficult for people to get, or, as Jean Ryan said, sometimes the buckles aren't even provided at all. Uber and Lyft demand that passengers sometimes cross the street to meet them, putting people with disabilities in danger of inaccessible road crossings. I've had to do that multiple times. We encourage the TLC to engage vehicle manufacturers like Toyota to develop accessible EVs. New York City is an enormous market, which could entice manufacturers to develop the first widely-used accessible EVs in the US. Lastly, we applaud the TLC for improving the requirements that dispatchers serve at least ninety percent of wave vehicles and wave requests in under ten minutes, an improvement on the former ninety, numbers of eighty percent in ten minutes and ninety percent in fifteen minutes. We support the increase in reporting requirements. And we support all the changes that you guys are making to make the city more accessible. I want to echo what Joe and Jean and Anna said about the importance of this and also that ADA compliance is definitely important for disabled New Yorkers. And as more people get more disabled and our population is aging, we need to have more accessible vehicles for everyone. Thank you so much. I appreciate being able to talk.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Avic Kebesa. Mr. Kebesa, can you unmute your mic and begin?
Sorry. Good morning, Commissioner. My name is Avic Kebesa. I'm the CEO of Carmel, board member of the Livery Roundtable, and the chairman of the New York State Livery Workers Compensation Fund. Carmel services a hundred and eighty-four cities around the US. And as such, I can state here before you that there is no other city in the US, no other city comes even close to answering ninety percent wave request within fifteen minutes and eighty percent within ten minutes, like we currently do in New York City. In other words, we are already the shining city on the hill when it comes to wave service. And as far as what the Commissioner said about we are doing it already, the data I've seen that was presented today shows that we are not doing ninety percent ten minutes. We're doing ninety-seven fifteen minutes and eighty-seven ten minutes. So again, we already hold the highest record as far as the US. Now, there's nothing wrong with wanting to push our own record. But being number one already can allow us to consider a harm such push may cause. As you know, the transitional four-hire sector is complying with the current wave rule by paying into the approved wave dispatch program. The amount we pay is directly correlated to the number of wave needed on the road to achieve that requirement. Adapting the proposed role, rule will mean increasing the number of waves and with it, increasing the cost of traditional bases. It is no secret, traditional bases are, are in a dire financial state. So increasing our overall will result in greater harm than the pleasure of breaking our own amazing record. Therefore, we respectfully request, Livery Roundtable respectfully request, that you vote against the wave proposal. But if you still want to push the, the envelope, we ask you to do it in moderation. And as Jose from the Livery Based Owner Association said, maybe just move it from eighty to eighty-five. We're proud. We are the best in, in the nation, and we don't have to cause unintended consequences harm to the traditional sector. Thank you very much, and I can answer any questions.
Okay. All right, thank you. Our next speaker is Evan Yankee.
Good morning, everybody. My name is Evan Yankee, and I am the Advocacy Director for Brooklyn Center for Independence of the Disabled. And we are here today to testify in support of efforts to reduce wait times for wheelchair-accessible four-hire vehicles. The proposed new rules would require dispatchers to serve ninety percent of wheelchair-accessible vehicle requests in under ten minutes and require companies to do better reporting on their times. More than a year ago, we met with Chairman Doe to talk about this, and we're pleased that the TLC is moving forward. But we think another way of moving forward is to codify a tightening of these rules over time so that response times are in fact equivalent to non-wheelchair-accessible vehicle response times as is required by your own rules. Users who depend on these vehicles fear being stranded and fear upsets to vehicle accessibility during peak usage times or when traveling in transportation deserts. While the data we saw today on four-hire vehicles achieving successes in wait time reductions, we remain concerned for people in the ten percent who are not receiving equivalent wait times and may be disproportionately impacted based on their location or needs. People with disabilities in New York City cannot always rely on being in a four-hire vehicle-rich neighborhood when they need accessible transportation. Unless response times improve even further than the proposed rule, people with disabilities will continue to face service people with disabilities will continue to face service risks that make it harder to travel around and maintain employment in this city. We know that you will be hearing from other people with disabilities and organizations saying support of further tightening of response times, and we urge you to listen to them. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Yankee was our last speaker on this rule proposal.